Number 21st, 6:00 PM meeting. Please place all electronic communication devices on silent. Our roll call, District 1, present. District 2?
Present.
District 3? District 4?
Here.
District 5? We have a quorum. At this time, we'll go over our Board norms and protocols. If we would, let's display the graphic. Board norms and protocols that we are dealing with in Quarter 4. We are dealing with honesty, trust, and integrity. Honesty, trust, and integrity. This time, we'll move to our prayer and pledge. Our prayer will be led by Mr. Holmes of III, and our pledge will be led by Ms. Register of II.
Right now, the way, but with humbleness and love in our Father God, asking that you will lead, guide, and direct us throughout these proceedings. Lord God, let us make good decisions for all concerned. And Father God, we ask that the ones who are being honored and the ones who may not be, let them know that they are so important to our past, present, and future. We ask these things knowing that you can and you will, and it's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Our pledge will be led by 2nd grade scholar Michelle Trejilios Salgado, who's a scholar at Beaverbrook Elementary School.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the public a witness stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Let's give our scholar a round of applause. Our school spotlight is Beaverbrook Elementary School. Let's give it up for Beaverbrook Elementary School. Beaverbrook Elementary has the pleasure of being in the 5th district, and so when we present the certificate, I will give it to my vice chair to present to the folks over in District 5. School name, Beaverbrook Elementary School. How many scholars attend your school? 321. What is your mascot? Beaver. How many faculty and staff members work at your school? 53. A quote from the principal on why you love being the proud principal of the school. "I love being the proud principal of Beaverbrook Elementary because our school is a place where students, staff, and families come together with a shared purpose to make learning meaningful and success possible for every child. Every day, I'm inspired by the joy, resilience, and dedication that fill our halls. Beaverbrook truly is a special place where students believe, excel, strive, and teach daily. Our students and staff are truly the best. What good things are going on at the school socially and educationally? This year, the students and staff have truly embraced our theme, launched into learning, and leading for that matter. ... and being 21st century leaders as we have partnered with the Instructional Technology Department on a couple of different endeavors. Currently, our 3rd and 5th grade students and teachers are piloting artificial intelligence platforms to assist the Griffin Spalding County School System in determining which will be the best one for our district to use. As well, we are forming a robotics team with the help of Ms. Leslie Fagan to compete in this year's VEX Robotics Competition. Our reading initiative continues with students participating in a celebrated reader. One 5th grader has already earned 208 points." Let's give it up for that scholar. We love scholar achievement here in our district. After-school book clubs are spearheaded by Ms. Bell and another one of our students, and students will participate in the Tone Come as members of the Tone Student Literacy Society. Additionally, students are still full-tilt in the world of theater. Students have the opportunity to perform puppet shows for parents at this year's Curriculum Night. They will participate in the Christmas music production and are beginning to prepare for this year's spring production of Honk Junior. Y'all, let's give it up for our Fine Arts Department. We have Ms. Wilson on the front row who is helping with a lot of those initiatives. Finally, teachers are engaged in Georgia LEED's coaching cycles as Georgia LEED's pilot school for the 3rd year. As the state works to roll out a new system for evaluating teachers as well as participating in a book study, "Do You Know Enough About Me to Teach Me?", focusing on building strong relationships and refining instructional practice. What is the school doing to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity among scholars, families, and staff? Beaverbrook Elementary School embodies being the best, believing in ourselves, selling in choices, striving for success, and teaching others daily. This year, we are beginning our journey with Leader in Me and have began leaderizing the school and teaching lessons during SEL time. Our teachers are focused on building relationships with students. Each week, teachers make three positive phone calls to parents highlighting the students from their classes. Additionally, teachers select a Leader of the Week, as well as a student who has exhibited traits from the character word of the month is chosen from each class as Student of the Month. Each month, Beaverbrook celebrates people from all walks of life to share and educate on how all cultures of people impact our world. Each month, a different culture is highlighted on a bulletin board containing factual information for scholars to read, and individual is recognized each afternoon on the announcements. Most recently, we celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month, complete with Ms. RV, Ms. Hudson, and Ms. English leading salsa classes in the gym for all grades. During classroom lessons, Ms. RV is able to provide the opportunity for students to share similarities and differences, likes and dislikes, and creates an inclusive environment where all scholars are welcome. As well, Ms. RV has been working hard to train all teachers in classes to hold restorative circles, providing the opportunity for all students to have a voice, share similarities and differences, and find their comfort zone. Finally, Beaverbrook will once again host its annual Career Fair, which continues to grow each year. This event exposes students to careers from each of the 17 career clusters, showing students that no matter which career path they choose, there is something for everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, let's give it up for Beaverbrook At this time, we invite our scholar. You know, we were talking earlier, Jordan Hill has a mayor, but Beaverbrook has a president. So we want Madam El Presidente, Michelle Trejilios Salgado to come back up? Oh, she said deuce, Poppy. All right, cool. She bounced. All right. Principal McGavin, bring your staff up and let's take our spotlight picture. She bounced. She left. Going to pass it over to Mr. Holmes of III.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to introduce my assistant for tonight. She is none other than Jayla Gordon. She is a 12th grader at Griffin High School. Her activities include, she's on the Superintendent's Advisory Council. She's a proud member of the GHS Band of Gold, drum major, baronet, and GHS Symphonic Band in the club, up on Hosa, and work-based learning. Her college of choice, of choice is Biology. He already did, but I think I got Mr. Brown microphone.
Always works, sir. Thank you.
Her first college of choice, as I was saying, is Florida A&amp;M, Go Rattlers. Her choice is a major is Biology, Pre-Medical Studies. Her second choice has already been, she's already been accepted into Jackson State University. And go ahead and give her a hand clap of praise. Amen. Amen. She has earned a seat in the GMEA District, now an honor band two years in a row, earned a superior rating at GMEA Solo and Ensemble, and is also a recipient of the National African American Recognition Award from the College Board. And while I'm introducing her, she can start walking up. Oh, she's already there. Okay, all right, all right. I would like to mention, that's what I want to make sure I got the date and everything correct, the Band of Gold is in a fundraiser, process of a fundraiser, so that they can go to Washington DC, let me get my good eye on, November, November the 8th, to participate in the National Veterans Day Parade. So if you have not contributed, please ma'am and please sir, seek from her or the director, Mr. Goodman, to make your contributions. With that, I turn it over to my assistant.
Chairman Brown, Members of the Board, and Interim Superintendent Warren, my name is Jayla Gordon, and I am a senior at Griffin High School. I would like to thank the Board of Education for involving scholars at the district in the policy and legislative process. The announcements for the October 21st, 2025 Board of Education meeting are as follows. There will be a Board of Education meeting on November 11th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom at 216 South 6th Street. Griffin Spalding County Schools will be closed November 24th through the 28th, 2025, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Governance team, cabinet members, and stakeholders, this concludes the Board of Education announcements for October 21st, 2025.
Thank you so much for our announcements. Please govern yourselves accordingly. All right, this time, we're going to move on to the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this item, the adoption of the agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Holmes of III. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Register of II. Is there any discussion here or none? All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. 5-0. This time, we'll move to one of our favorite parts of our program during our board meetings. This recognitions will be done by Ms. McDonnell of V.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. This is always an honored time to sit before you and recognize not only the past, present, and future, but the people that work for us on a daily basis. Thank you for being here tonight. First, we have Educator Hall of Fame, Mr. Adam Pugh.
All right, and this is a treat. Thank you to everyone who's here for this awesome occasion. Welcome to our 2025 Educator Hall of Fame induction ceremony, and this is a treat. I look forward to this day each year. This year, seven Griffin Spalding County School System educators are being recognized for their contribution to education. In August, GSCS sought nominations of exemplary educators who made outstanding and significant contributions to students, staff, parents, and this community during their employment at GSCS. All nominees must have been employed at GSCS for a minimum of 10 years, and they must have been retired for at least five years to be eligible. I'll read a short bio about each inductee. While I'm reading each bio, I'd like to ask that the inductee make their way forward, receive an Educator Hall of Fame trophy from our Interim Superintendent, Dr. Donald Warren, and then make your way over to the step and repeat, the GSCS logo backdrop over there, to have individual photos made with our Board of Education. So the board will take a photo with each of the inductees. Then you'll make your way back to your seat and remain there until the end. Once all of the inductees have taken their individual photo, we'll call you back up as a group to take a group photo with the board. After all of the recommendations, after all of the recognitions are complete, there'll be an intermission, and at that time, when the board goes into intermission, families can go up and take pictures, and Laura and I can help man the cameras for you guys if you'd like us to. All right. So this evening, we're excited to honor and recognize our 2025 Griffin Spalding Educator Hall of Fame inductees. Christine Briggs, Retha Hollis Brown, Robbie Burke, Pamela Calhoun Jackson, Paula Calhoun Sanders, Jan Kariker, and Emily Wilson. These individuals will represent the 13th class of Educator Hall of Fame inductees. Between them, they add up to 184 years of service to Griffin Spalding County School And it's impossible to measure the amount of impact they've collectively had on, on young people in our community. We appreciate you all very much. And first, I would like to recognize inductee, Ms. Christine Briggs. Christine Briggs served GSCS for 35 years. She began her career as a middle school teacher for the Crossroads Program in 1981. After obtaining her master's degree, she returned to the Crossroads Program from 1985 to 1996. She served as the art therapist. In 1996, she began her career in administration as the adolescent program director, and in 2001, she was named the Crossroads Program Director. Ms. Briggs served the Georgia Network of Educational and Therapeutic Supports, known as GNets, as the mainstay academy director until she retired in 2018. Throughout her career, Chris demonstrated an unwavering commitment to advancing education and therapeutic supports for students with significant emotional and behavioral needs. She pioneered the integration of clinical art therapy, introduced developmentally-focused and relationally-therapeutic practices, and promoted safe, effective alternatives to seclusion. Under her leadership, the program became one of the first in the state to eliminate locked seclusion rooms and significantly reduced physical restraints through de-escalation techniques. Ms. Briggs also guided the Griffin Spalding GNets program to become one of the first in Georgia to implement PBIS, setting a statewide standard. Once again, Ms. Christine Briggs. Retha Hollis Brown served GSCS for 27 years. She taught at both the elementary and middle school levels, leaving a lasting impact on countless students. Brown was honored as an educator by being named Teacher of the Year three times and chosen as a star teacher twice. Beyond the classroom, Brown introduced students to critical thinking and strategy through chess, mentoring many champions who excelled in district and statewide competitions. Her students thrived in academic challenges such as risa recitation, Challenge 24, Science Fair, and Social Studies competitions. She also nurtured students' social and emotional growth by hosting etiquette classes, creative classroom celebrations, and other memorable activities that built community and confidence. Ms. Brown continues to be a beacon of light in our community, providing rich academic opportunities to children and mentoring younger teachers, guiding them with wisdom and encouragement. She is the visionary founder of Elbow Learning Lab, which earned national recognition as a President George H.W. Bush Point of Light. She also founded KIP Griffin, a program dedicated to providing rich academic opportunities to children in grades pre-K through 8 in our community. Once again, Ms. Retha Hollis Brown. He served GSCS for 15 years at Taylor Street and Rehoboth Middle Schools and Spalding High School. His family was unable to attend tonight and requested that his recognition occur at a later date. His award will be accepted later by his wife, Dawn Burke, and we'll read his full bio at that time, but let's still give him a round of applause. Thank you. Next is Ms. Pamela Calhoun Jackson. Pamela Calhoun Jackson served GSCS all 31 years that she was in education, with 27 of those years as a school counselor. Throughout her career as a counselor, she created a safe space where students could express themselves and navigate challenges. Pamela contributed significantly, creating the GSCS Parent University Workshops, and she served as a system-wide spelling bee co-coordinator for 27 straight years. Pamela was instrumental in supporting the community through initiatives like the backpack giveaway and coat drives, ensuring that every child starts each school year equipped and confident. Additionally, she collaborated with the parent liaisons to conduct workshops empowering students with knowledge and tools needed to support their children's educational journey. Ms. Calhoun Jackson had the ability to connect with students on a deep, personal level. She has an innate talent for making students feel seen, heard, and valued, regardless of their background or circumstances. You get the prize for bringing the most fans with you. And in case you guys think you're seeing double, they are related. Paula Calhoun Sanders served GSCS for 27 years as an elementary educator and school counselor. She was dedicated to helping students succeed. Her quick wit and positive demeanor were instrumental in creating a positive learning environment. Beyond the classroom and school, Sanders made significant contributions to the community, positively impacting both students and families. Through her involvement in College 101, she provided essential information and guidance to students, helping them navigate the complexities of college preparation. Her commitment to improving the lives of others extends to her work with Habitat for Humanity, where she has actively participated in efforts to improve housing conditions for those in need. Her classroom was a haven of creativity and exploration where each child felt valued and empowered to reach their full potential. She had a special gift for recognizing the unique strengths of her students, nurturing them in ways that left a lasting impression on their academic and personal growth. The next inductee is Ms. Jan Kariker. And accepting on her behalf is Jenny Wilson. Jan Kariker served GSCS for 20 years in music education. She taught at Jackson Road Elementary, Ann Street Elementary, and Flint Street Middle School. Under her guidance, students earned placements in distinguished ensembles, including the GMEA District Middle School Honor Chorus, GMA All-State Chorus, and the renowned Spivey Hall Children's Choir. Beyond the classroom, she co-produced Flint Street Middle School's first musical, broadening opportunities for students to explore theater. Ms. Kariker also used her talents to contribute to the community as a co-founding member of the Griffin Choral Arts Performing Group, where she served on the Board of Directors from 2007 to 2013. She not only prepared her students musically, but also inspired confidence, discipline, and a commitment to excellence. She believed in her students, encouraged them to take risks, and celebrated their successes. She was also the teacher of Ms. Wilson, our performing arts director who is accepting on her behalf. Many of us in school knew her as Ms. Whalen. Once again, Jan Kariker. And our last inductee today is Ms. Emily Wilson. Her award is being accepted by her daughter, Beth Griffin. Emily Wilson was an educator for nearly 40 years, serving GSCS for 33 of those years. Being an honor graduate of Griffin High School in 1955, she was a complete product and champion of GSCS. She taught at Crescent Elementary, Beaverbrook Elementary, Jackson Road Elementary, and Taylor Street Middle School, where she was selected as the District Teacher of the Year in 1997. In addition to teaching, Wilson served as peer evaluator for the Beginning Teacher Assessment Program, the Staff Development Coordinator, National Geography Bee Coordinator, Spelling Bee Facilitator, and co-sponsor of the FHA Hero Club. Even after her retirement, Wilson continued to serve as a frequent long-term substitute teacher. She mentored new teachers and volunteered to be a chaperone on the annual 6th grade trip to Washington DC. The legacy of Emily Wilson is one of excellence, leadership, and unwavering dedication to the success and well-being of students. Her legacy as a dedicated educator, teacher, leader, and advocate for her students is one that continues to inspire all who had the privilege of working with her. One more time, Ms. Emily Wilson. Now, if we could have the inductees make their way over for a group photo, and I'll say a few closing comments as they're making their way over to have a group photo. All seven of these inductees have made outstanding and significant contributions to the students, staff, and parents of Griffin Spalding. Their dedication and service to the students of this community has made a lasting impression. We are proud to induct Christine Briggs, Retha Hollis Brown, Robbie Burke, Pamela Calhoun Jackson, Paula Calhoun Sanders, Jan Kariker, and Emily Wilson into the GSCS Educator Hall of Fame. Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you again so much for your service to this community.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Nice job. Congratulations to all the recipients and family members and special guests that could be here tonight to witness this. Thank you for your service to our community. Recently, I was contacted by Brenda Dent, the president of the Mixed Art Media Club at Sun City. Most of you know I'm from District 5, and I do live in Sun City. Ms. Dent wanted to present a $250 check from the Mixed Art Media Class, group rather, to an art teacher in my district. Of the two schools in my district, Beaverbrook has theater and Jordan Hill has art. So unfortunately, I couldn't split the check, but however, we are going to present a check tonight to Ms. English to present to Tracy Holm, the art teacher at Jordan Hill, who could not be with us tonight. I'm a member of that club at Sun City, the Mixed Art Media Group, and I tell you, I've been exposed to art that I would have never had an opportunity to be exposed to. Acrylic, watercolor, pastels, just, they brought in people to teach us how to draw and proportions and all kinds of things like that. It's just been truly a blessing to me to be a part of that group. Lots of talented people in Sun City, lots of talented artists in Sun City. Unfortunately, I'm not one of them. Unfortunately, I'm not one of them. However, I enjoy going and meeting new people. So tonight, we want to present a check from the Mixed Art Media Group. Ms. Janet Walker is here. She is the secretary of the group, so Janet, if you'll come up. We want to present, Ms. English, would you come up? And then Ms. Wilson, our Fine Arts Director. And Ms. Holm, who, as I mentioned earlier, could not be here tonight to get the check, but I think it's important that the board recognizes people in the community that give back to our community, that give to our teachers, that give to our students. So that's one reason I wanted this added to the agenda, because it's significant to help a teacher at a local school to help her students. So just give me a second, I'll get in that picture too, Ms. Bieber. All right, so we're going to present this check to Jordan Hill for $250.
If y'all want to see these pictures, just go to my Facebook page tonight, y'all can see them.
Get banged out of order now. It is not your time.
I missed that. I think I'm thankful I did. I'm just kidding. And next, we want to recognize the parent-to-teacher TAP grant recipient, Ms. Battle.
Good evening, everyone. The Griffin Spalding County School District continues to take great strides in strengthening our teacher pipeline. The Georgia Department of Education has partnered with the Georgia Department of Labor to offer apprenticeship opportunities for parent professionals who aspire to become certified teachers. The Public Service Apprenticeship Program, PSAP, allows employees to create registered apprenticeship programs through the Technical College System of Georgia, which provides grant funding to support this very important work. Last year, our district applied for three apprenticeship positions, and we are thrilled to recognize the recipients. So first, we will introduce Ms. April Hester. And this certificate of recognition reads, "We proudly present this to April Hester on this day, October 21st, 2025, in recognition of your dedication to professional growth and participation in the GSCS Parent-to-Teacher Pathway Program. You exemplify our mission to grow our own educators and strengthen the future of teaching." And so what that also means is that each of these outstanding individuals will receive a $2,000 tuition stipend per semester, and they will receive it this semester as well as next semester to support their continued journey towards teacher certification. Congratulations. The next recipient is Ms. Kaitlyn Talbot. The third recipient is Savannah Brown. Additionally, our district applied for the Georgia TAP reimbursement grant. This grant allows school systems to receive reimbursement for parent professionals who have successfully completed the Georgia TAP program and are now serving as teachers of record in their own classrooms. We are proud to present these individuals with a reimbursement of up to $5,000. Oh, yeah. And directly to these educators from the Georgia Department of Education in recognition of their dedication, perseverance, and commitment to the teaching profession. So we have two grant recipients, Frederick Pritchett. And so we also have another recipient that could not be here tonight, but we certainly want to recognize her efforts as well. So we have Ms. Kaitlyn Echols. So she could not be here this evening.
In the words of Martin Lawrence, "You ain't gotta leave, but you gotta get out of here." All right, the board is coming back to order. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda item on this agenda?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonough V. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Weldon O. IV. Is there any discussion here and none? Please vote by raising your right hand. The consent agenda is approved. All right, next up, action items. School year calendars 2026, 2027, Ms. Judy Battle.
All right, good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Interim Superintendent Dr. Donald Warren. It is the recog, it is, okay. All right, so just to give you some background, this is a presentation of our 2627 school year calendar, and we went through a process-
A highly individualized approach for students with disabilities that receive intensive instruction with general education standards while receiving targeted support with adaptive and social skills. The goal is to provide students alongside their non-disabled peers, further supporting inclusion, collaboration, and community. The ultimate goal is to help students successfully transition into the least restrictive environment. This evening, I'm pleased to introduce my colleague, Mrs. Joan Puckett, the Elementary Special Programs Lead, who will provide additional information about bridge classes, followed by Mrs. Anne, I'm sorry, Ms. Amy Chambers, excuse me, and Special Education Instructor, Mrs. Becky Harlow.
Good evening, Interim Superintendent Warren, Chairman Brown, members of the board and guests. I am Joan Puckett, Special Programs Instructional Lead for the Department of Exceptional Students. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about the Bridge Program. The Bridge Program serves students with moderate to significant academic differences between their grade level and instructional level. In addition to academic needs, many of our students also demonstrate deficits in areas such as adaptive behavior, communication, and social skills. Our instructional approach combines the Georgia Standards of Excellence with specially-designed instruction and social-emotional learning curriculum. Students also receive targeted reading and math interventions and related services as appropriate to their individualized needs. A key feature of the program is inclusion. Our students spend the majority of the school day in a general education classroom with their grade-level peers. Instruction is supported by a general education teacher, a special education teacher, and a special education paraprofessional, ensuring success, engagement, and meaningful participation for all students. Students also benefit from visual supports integrated into instructional activities and access to augmentative communication systems when needed. Students in our Bridge Program participate in district benchmark assessments and take Georgia milestones beginning in third grade. The Department of Exceptional Students Bridge Program embodies our district's commitment to equity, access, and inclusion, ensuring that every student learns, grows, and belongs in their school community. Thank you for your continued support of our students and programs in the Department of Exceptional Students.
Dr. Warren and board members, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm, of course, Amy Chambers. I am the very lucky principal at Crescent Elementary, and I just wanted to share a little bit with you about this amazing program. Special Ed is very, very near to my heart. I taught Special Ed for nineteen years before becoming an administrator, and I also have a daughter who has an intellectual disability who was served through school in a self-contained setting. So, you know, Special Ed has my heart. When Mr. Kelly came to see me a few years ago that we were going to have, he was going to start these Bridge Programs and I was going to be able to house several of them at my school, I was so very excited. It has taken a lot of work over the last three years to develop the classes, but it has been such a rewarding experience for both the adults and the students. I can say with excitement that all three of our classes are going great and our students are making amazing progress. And here's some pictures of our classes up here. I did want to share some of the benefits for our students that are served in these classes, so starting with our exceptional students. Most of these students would have most likely been served through a self-contained classroom prior to these classes being developed. Now they have the opportunity to learn in a classroom with their general-led peers. It allows for those students to learn the same academic content as their peers with the support needed. The daily interaction with their typically developing peers enhances communication, cooperation, and friendship skills. The language skills of our exceptional students are growing in so many ways by being exposed to their typical peers. Students gain models of appropriate behavior and social norms, and being part of the general-led classroom fosters belonging and reduces stigma. Students see themselves as capable learners rather than different, and it builds greater independence for those exceptional students. Now, we also see so many benefits on the other side for our general-led students that participate in these classes. They, we see so much development in their empathy and acceptance. Students learn to appreciate differences and value diversity. Inclusion builds a more inclusive and respectful classroom culture. Working alongside peers with different learning needs fosters teamwork, patience, and problem-solving skills. Lots of patience sometimes. Strategies like small-group learning, visual supports, and multiple means of engagement benefit all the learners in the classroom. General-led students often take on mentoring or peer helper roles, and that helps build their confidence, responsibility, and their leadership skills. And inclusion mirrors real-life diversity. Students learn that everyone contributes in different ways. And I do want to say, for inclusion to be successful, it is vital that you have the right people in those positions. And we are very, very lucky at Crescent because we have an amazing team in all three of our grade levels. We actually house the kindergarten, first grade, and second grade inclusion classes. So if my kindergarten folks are here with stand-up, Mr. Askins and Ms. Franklin are our two teachers. Ms. Brooke, we have, in that classroom, we actually have sixteen students. We have eight exceptional students and eight general-led kids in there. We have our two teachers, and we actually have three paraprofessionals, Ms. Brooks, Ms. Lachlan, and Ms. Greer. They couldn't be here tonight. Our first-grade program, we have Ms. Harlow and Ms. Davis, if she'll stand. We brought Ms. Davis back out of retirement to join us. And we have Ms. Varneado and Ms. Talbot that are in there. In that classroom, we have seventeen students. We have eleven general-led students in there, and we have six, is that correct, exceptional students. And then our second-grade program, we have Ms. Wilson. Ms. Evans is our other teacher. She actually had surgery last week, so she's not here tonight. And we also have, we also have, Ms. Evans is watching, so kudos, Ms. Evans. We also have Ms. Barnes, who is our paraprofessional. We actually have twenty students in that class. We have ten general-led students and ten special education students. And so it is a, I mean, it takes a lot of work, but if you have the right people in place, it is such, just a wonderful experience. These individuals work tirelessly to meet the individual and unique needs of the students, and they do it so well. And I also wanted to just take a minute, because it takes a village, Mr. Glenn, our AP, is here, and Dr. Johnson, our RCS, our compliance specialist, is here, and they're always jumping in and helping too. So, I asked Ms. Harlow if she would just say a couple of things from a teacher's perspective, just so you could kind of hear from her of the benefits of the program.
Good evening, Interim Superintendent Warren, Chairman Brown, and board members. I'm really excited to be here today to talk about this inclusion class that I get to be a part of each day. I wasn't sure what this class involved when I was first asked to be the inclusion teacher, but I learned quickly that it means that everyone gets to play, everyone gets to learn, and everyone belongs. It means that others may look different, they may like different things and learn in different ways, but that's what makes our class so special. During some assignments, we may have to highlight some letters or words to help accommodate the kiddos each day, and this year I have learned to appreciate the highlights from each of our days. During academics, our students have times where they struggle, but one day, when the teacher mentioned that we were transitioning to our phonics program for our OG lesson, he stood up in class and went, "I love OG!" And we were just like, "Good." And another student, who last year was pretty much nonverbal for most of the day, and he had a lot of behavioral challenges in social settings, walked up to Mr. Joel Posh during an observation when Ms. Joan Puckett was there and said, "I like your beard." And we were like, "Okay." And it was beautiful to see. It was definitely the highlight of that day. We all know that teaching is challenging at times, but each day, we're very thankful that we get to see those highlights from students that struggled in the past, and we're excited to be a part of it. Thank you for having us.
Amazing.
We'll turn it back over to the board if y'all have any questions. I have a brief comment after, if y'all have any questions or comments.
All right, board members, do we have any questions for Mr. Kelly and those who presented this evening? No. Mr. Kelly?
And so, the Bridge Program is something that's very unique. I'm not aware of any other districts surrounding us that offers this type of program. It's something that we developed in collaboration with Muskogee that have a similar program, but not quite exactly how we implement the program. But it is a way for us to offer that opportunity to be in the general ed setting and to interact with general ed students for a lot of students that, prior to this program, they never did, were able to interact fully with their general ed peers. So, and it takes a big commitment from the district, because like what Ms. Chambers said in the kindergarten class, we have five staff members in that kindergarten class. And that sounds like a lot, but if you go in there, there's a lot of kids, and they need every single hand, you know? It's five staff with two hands each, that's ten hands, so you gotta have a hand for a kid a lot of times in those, in that class, especially the kindergarten class, very busy. But, so we definitely appreciate the commitment for this program. We also appreciate the time to be able to submit, or to be able to talk about some of the successes that we've seen with the programs and the great staff that we have and the great students that we serve in the district. And the last thing I have is that you guys will receive an email tomorrow about an opportunity to tour Project Strong, our other, one of our newest program that we have. And so just be on the lookout for that email, so we can set up the date that you guys can come out and tour that program. Okay? All right, thank you.
Yeah, let's give Mr. Kelly and his staff a wonderful round of applause, and give a shout-out to Dr. Chris Ridley as well, who leads that department.
All right, peeps, we are getting ready to do our September 2025 BoE Financial Report. We ask that Mr. Byron, Moneybag Yo, cha-ching, come to the podium.
Thank you for that generous introduction, Mr. Brown. Good evening, board members. This is our September financial, so we're one quarter through the year so far. About thirty-two million in reserve balance on the bottom left, and nutrition's about three-point-six million. Again, as I've explained before, that will trend downward till the tax bills go out and then start to become collected. General operating statement, about six-point-three million in revenue for the month of September on ten million in spending. So we are in a deficit mode for the current year right now, but close to ten million dollars again, that's normal for this time of year. Special revenue funds, again, until our grants are approved at the state level, we don't really have a lot of revenues at the top. We do get pre-K revenues, which is almost a million dollars so far that we've received in our spending at the bottom. So again, if you see a negative on the very bottom, that's waiting to be approved at the state level, and we will draw that money down. For nutrition, about two million in revenue so far through the first quarter on about one-point-eight million in spending, so we're still about two-hundred thousand to the positive. On our investment funds, about a hundred-and-seven-and-a-half million right now, four-point-two-eight percent on the revenue side, still strong. Still hadn't dropped below four in at least a year or so, so that's still strong at this point in the year. And on our splosts, so two months into year number two, so we've had back-to-back one-point-three million dollar splosts, that's just very strong for Spalding County, really proud of that. So about seventeen-point-two million is what we've collected so far, fourteen months in. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've heard the report from Moneybag Yo. Are there any questions? Mr. Holmes, you ain't got no questions? All right, all right. Here none. All right, thank you so much, Moneybag. Next up, we have information item, Construction Renovation Progress Summary, number three-oh-seven, was included in your packets, and our Monthly Facilities and Maintenance Report for September 2025 was in our packets as well. This time, we're going to move to Governance Team Comments. We're going to start with Ms. Weldon.
Been a celebration night tonight, and it's been just so much positive things happening, and that's just been delightful, because I think we need to see the positive things and work on our weaknesses. And it's so exciting to see so many people that I've worked with and known throughout the years that are now in the Hall of Fame. We also attended the first flag football girls' team yesterday. That was so exciting, and they're off to a good start, and that was really fun to see. So I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for outstanding job you do every day. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Number one, I hope everyone had a nice restful break. Mr. Kelly, I want to especially shout-out to you and your people that were up here tonight giving us that report. I'm sitting here thinking, as a former educator myself and mainstreaming Sped students to my classroom, it was one of the biggest thrills of my life to see the interaction between general ed and Sped and them come together for the common goal of learning, and I appreciate everyone that was here tonight to present to that. I publicly wanted to thank Mr. Stikes, he was here earlier, but I'm going to tell you, we just had a ball last night at flag football. I don't know what was going on, but I'm going to learn. I'm just going to tell you, I just need to learn the rules, and I will do that. But, Mr. Stikes, I just wanted to give a shout-out to you for inviting the women, and somehow, Mr. Brown and Mr. Holmes showed up, but that's okay, we let them in the pictures, because we were doing the coin tosses between the two games that were shared at the, at the field across the street. So we just had a great time. So, Mr. Stikes, I just wanted to thank you and your team for inviting us to do that. I also wanted to publicly thank Dr. Warren, Mr. Pugh, Ms. Sims, and Mr. Jones for coming out to Sun City a couple of weeks ago, presenting to my neighbors about House Bill, whatever it is, five-eighty-one, thank you, and presenting, made some major strides with regard to educating my neighbors about how good this school system is, and I agree with Ms. Weldon. If you don't believe good things are going on, then I don't know what you're looking for. You know, we have a tendency to always look at the negative and put our attention on the negative, and I tell people every day, there's a lot more good going on in this system than bad. But you've got to get out of your seat, and you've got to call one of us, we'll take you into our schools, and we will show you how good things really are. So thank you to the four that came out to Sun City. The feedback was extremely positive, and they learned a lot, so that's always good. And I also wanted to wish all of our principals, it's Principals Month, I believe, is that correct? Happy Principals Month? I don't know how you say that, but, you know, through the years, I have had the opportunity to develop relationships with our principals, and I'm going to tell you, we've got great leaders in these schools, that they're seasoned leaders, most of them, and they know what they're doing. And I just wanted to say thank you to each of you, and thank you for being here tonight, too. And that concludes my remarks. Mr. Brown, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Register of the second.
I think y'all have stolen all of my thunder, but I will just kind of piggyback off what you've said. Congrats to everybody who was inducted into the Hall of Fame, that's a huge accomplishment. A lot of them are my former educators, and look how great I turned out.
That's debatable.
The flag football, just to talk about that, that was an amazing experience. I highly recommend that everybody go out and see a game and support. This, it's, I learned quickly, I don't know how to toss a coin, so I'm glad that Ms. McDonald was willing to do that, because that was very intimidating, if you haven't ever done a coin toss before. The Bridge Program is, the Bridges Program is amazing. Crescent is definitely the school to pilot this. Amy Chambers does amazing things at that, at that school. I actually think, I was thinking, when you were presenting, that, you know, with the success that we see with this, it'd be great if y'all could present that at a conference, an educators' conference, you know, coming up. That would be amazing to highlight all the good things that we are doing here in this system, because so often, all we hear about is all the negative things, and we really are doing some really great work here in this system. So I just want to thank everybody for all the work that you do on a daily basis, day in and day out, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Register. We'll move to Mr. Holmes of the third.
Ms. Brown, as the chair for the opportunity, first, I want to say it's so good to see our past county manager, William Wilson. I thought you was in a nursing home, but I guess that wasn't, that wasn't the actual facts that they told me. I also want to say, say that, what a wonderful night. I'm like Kim, everyone that was inducted, I had some kind of connection, and I was just sitting here looking at Ms. Brown, and I'm thinking about the days that AZ Kelsey was sent out, and Adam Pugh running around over there with their moms, and man, look where we are now, and God is good. But every, everyone that was honored tonight, I had some type of connection, and that's not how it always is. But I do have a sad place in my heart, because the ones who were not here to receive recognition, Ms. Wilson, he chaperoned kids to the trip to Washington for a number of years, and we actually, until they started allowing chaperones to get different room, we roomed together in chaperone buses, so I had a sad place in my heart, because those people were not here to be recognized and receive their award. But I'm like Ms. McDonald, I stand up and fight a brick when it comes to people talking about our school system, because we do have a lot of good things going on, we have good staff, and, but it seems like some people want to focus on the negative, but when you look at the big picture, we have a wonderful school system, and have great employees working real hard, and so I just want to say thank you to everyone. And remember, Thursday, Spalding High School has Senior Night, and Griffin High School has Homecoming Friday. So if you're able to meet, go out and see some of those activities on Thursday and Friday, I encourage you to do so, and I, for homecoming, I got something special for GHS, so it looks a little bit like what Ms. Brown got on her head.
You got a hat?
Yes, sir. I got, I got, I got a GHS Class of Seventy-Nine hat.
A brim.
Yeah, brim.
Oh, can't wait to see it.
Yes, sir. But I thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to make remarks, and to the staff, continue to push and continue to reach for the high mark. Thank you.
All right. It may storm tonight, our interim superintendent says that he has some words for Governance Team Comments.
It will not storm tonight. I hope not. Got to drive back to Athens. Good evening, everyone. What a wonderful board meeting tonight, lots of recognition for our Educator Hall of Fame. That's a very, very big honor and achievement. Those individuals have left a lot of lasting positive legacies here in Griffin-Spalding, so that's to be commended. Secondly, as indicated on our, on our screen there, October's National Principals Month, and from my time down in House County from living years, been a principal, I realize that is a tough task these days. I see Ms. Chambers in the audience, and a couple of the principals here that have left. I can, too, it's like a doctor working in an emergency room. You never know what's going to walk through your door. You can have, you know, observations laid out, meaning with the PLC laid out, but if incident happens, internal or external stakeholder, you got to drop it and pivot and be able to multitask, and sometimes wear the same, two different hats at the same time. So my hat's off to them, we have a great group of principals, they work very, very hard, they're hard-driven, we're going to see some good results in our student achievement this year, I can tell you that. And lastly, last night was a big success. I want to give kudos to Mr. Stikes also, he had to lead to Coach's, his child's ballgame tonight. My girls had a great time last night, so did our fans, we had a great audience there last night, a lot of spectators, our board members came. Additionally, my team, Mr. Holmes' team, the Atlanta Falcons, want to give a shout-out to the Mr. Arthur M. Blank Foundation, they provided several hundred thousand dollars in a grant to be able to implement flag football and soccer at our middle schools over a period of three to four years. So thanks to Mr. Blank and the foundation. Thank you.
All right, no problem. I definitely want to echo the same thing, want to give a shout-out to our scholar who did our pledge today, from Beaverbrook, Michelle Trahilio Salgado. We are looking to hear great things from you, our lovely, wonderful scholar. Also, shout-out to all of the amazing educators who were honored tonight. I think Adam said it was a hundred-and-eighty-four years totaling altogether, and so we know there's so much wisdom and so much passion and guidance between, behind what they do. Also, want to give a shout-out to the amazing staff that we have here in Griffin-Spalding, from Ms. Sims to Ms. Battle, Moneybag Yo, AP, Dr. Ridley, Ms. Ray, Dr. Blasengang, who I call, I think, one of the smartest men in America. You guys are the bedrock of this district, you help to keep things going. To our executive officers, thank you three so much for what you do. When we call or I call with an issue, you always make sure that you give that constituent, that customer service from beginning to end, and I thank you for that. Last but not least, there are two events that I want to promote that are going on in the omnipotent first district. On the twenty-eighth, we will have a town hall meeting for our grandparents. We have a lot of grandparents who are raising their grandchildren, and so we want to be able to show them that we are here to support them, and so we'll have different updates coming from our Teaching Learning Department, we'll have Moneybag Yo talking about the finances of the district and giving them the information on House Bill five-eighty-one. We also will have Dr. Ridley who will come by and Dr. Warren who will come by and just make their presence known, being as the interim superintendent and director of Student Support Service, because most things normally follow through those two. And so we're excited about that, and as we always like to celebrate literacy, we will do a unveiling of our third or fourth community book machine. And so Fairmont has been renovated, and so we're going to be there on the twenty-eighth at three o'clock PM, October twenty-eighth at three o'clock PM, we will unveil our community book machine that we have for our scholars, and so it's an exciting time that our scholars get excited about reading. They'll have little tokens that we'll be able to leave over at Fairmont, with SBA having different games and different trafficking activities going on over there in the Fairmont in District One. It will be good to make sure that our scholars have access to books, and so we're definitely excited about that. Want everybody to have a national, happy National Principals Month. I reached out to two of my former principals today, just thanking them for their work and everything that they did, especially Dr. Tanya Mahone-Williams, who took a chance on me twelve years ago by having me to teach seventh and eighth grade, and it was just such an amazing thing, and so we give a shout-out to our principals. And yes, last night was lit. It was lit, yeah. It was, it was lit. It was lit that we were able to celebrate the Arthur Blank Foundation for donating the funds to start these intramural sports in our district, lit that Mr. Stikes, my classmate, who has put a lot of work and time into this, Dr. Warren, as well as the coaches and the, all of the spectators, the families that were out there cheering on their scholars. It was just such an amazing time, all these years. Thank you, Ms. McDonald, for teaching me that innings are for baseball games and quarters are for football games, and so, and so we're just very thankful to have supporting staff, to have great scholars, and to have a district that is on the rise and on the move, and so we celebrate you guys. Thank you. That seems to be it for Governance Team Comments.
Ms. Brown.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chair, I forgot to mention the transportation, Mr. Martin, I guess it seems like I'm building something, because I go out there to the site. It's been since nineteen-fifty, and we're replacing that, but I see they have the foundation and everything, and I was quite pleased to see that. But if you haven't been out there, you got to look up on the hill toward this old elementary, and you can see the foundation, they've laid the foundation, the plumbing and everything, so that's a good sign, and I just wanted to make note of that, that's going on for the Transportation Department. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem at all. So that's it for Governance Team Comments, and y'all, we do not have executive session. Come on, come through, come through. All right, so now, what is the pleasure of this amazing body as it relates to the adjournment of this October twenty-first meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Register of the second, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Register of the fourth, I'm sure there is no discussion. Everybody raise your right hand, get your stuff, and bounce. Meeting is adjourned.